Alright, it is now six o'clock, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. And call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like, would like to remind all audience members and commissioners to please silence your cell phones. This time do a roll call.
Mister Casey?
Here.
Mister Hankins?
Here.
Ms. Cutsforth? Mister Arnie?
Present.
Mister Ritz?
Present.
Mister Ackley?
Here.
Mister Compton? Mister Perrin? Mister Jacobson?
This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found at back vestibule wall and online. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty one regular meeting.
I think the motion to approve the minutes of September twenty third, twenty twenty one regular meeting.
Motion by Casey?
Second.
Second by Arnie?
All voted yes, motion carried.
This time, I would entertain a motion to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates?
Yes, Mister Chair. Several emails and letters were received after your packets went out. On Agenda Item Three B, we have a letter of opposition from Reba and John Kervan. Also, an email in opposition from Brian Wilson, email in opposition from Jennifer Wilson. More information in opposition from Mister Marty Giff. And then for Agenda Item Three D. A letter from Kenneth and Edith German. So copies of those were all emailed to the commissioners prior to tonight's meeting. And hard copies are also available this evening as well.
I'd make a motion to approve our applications, memos, and handouts as supplemented with four additional items for Application Three B and one additional item for Application Three D.
Motion by Ackley?
Second by Hankins.
Second by Hankins.
All voted yes, motion carried.
There are no consent agenda items tonight, moving on to public hearings. I would read each item into the record, then open it up, then ask for an update from staff, open it up for public hearing. After the public hearing is closed, it'll be turned over to commissioners. I ask that everyone respect the golden rule, treat others as you wish to be treated. There are a number of people here tonight, so I will be enforcing the five-minute rule for each person. When you come up to the podium, please sign and in, sign your name and address into the record and please state it loudly for the record. First item is Item Three A, request to rezone lots one five four through one nine six. And outlots F through I, Spring Ridge being a plating of Tax Lot Twelve, Tax Lot Thirteen Alpha, Lot Two Bohack Edition, and Outlot B Green Meadows. All located in the southwest quarter of Section Twenty Two, T fourteen N, R thirteen E of the Six Prime Meridian. Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG and BG to RA, BG, and RG eight PS. For the purpose of single-family and multifamily residential development. And prelimin- preliminary platelots one five four through one nine six. And outlots F through I, Spring Ridge. Applicant Orchard Valley Inc., general location, South Twenty Fourth Street and Gilmore Lake Road. Case numbers Z dash two one zero three dash zero two. And S dash two one zero three dash zero five. Staff, could you give us an update on this?
Sure. This item first appeared on the Planning Commission agendas back in August, a couple months ago. At that time, it was continued at the applicant's request to tonight's meeting. Again, I would ask tonight that we just continue this item indefinitely. There's still a few issues that need to be worked through on the plating side of things. Rather than keep continuing this to month after month, I would just recommend we continue it indefinitely. What that means is, at which time it's ready to come back before the public for public hearing, we will re-advertise, re-notify neighbors, do all of that. So that would be my recommendation tonight.
Alright. It is a public hearing item, so I would open the, the public hearing up and for anyone that wishes to speak on the record for or against this item. Seeing no one, close for public hearing and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioners? Turn on your, your mic. Your mic.
I'll make a motion for the indefinite continuance of Item Three A.
Motion by Casey?
Second.
Second by Ackley?
All voted yes, motion carried.
Item Three B. Request for site plan approval for Lot Two Fontanel Replat One for the purpose of rebuilding an eleven-unit apartment building. Applicant Mark Sanford, general location Forest Drive and Hackberry Court. Case number Z dash two one zero nine dash one seven. Staff, could you give us an update?
Thank you, Mister Chair. This application is a request to rebuild an apartment building that burned down earlier this year. This apartment complex is located in the Fontanel Hills Development. This development is unique in that back in nineteen sixty-seven. An overall variance was granted under the zoning that the entire development is zoned RS one twenty. With specific properties being approved for certain uses. So multifamily residential, although not typically allowed in the RS one twenty zone, is allowed in the situation based on that original site plan approval. What the applicant is requesting to do is rebuild the building on the different side of the development versus where the building was originally placed. Primarily for the purpose of being able to meet ADA requirements. When constructing a new building, it has to meet ADA requirements. This is an area with some unique topography. The existing development does not meet ADA requirements, nor does it has to, nor does it have to based on its age. So that's primarily the reason why the applicant is coming forward with this request. It will not add any additional buildings or units. It will replace the building that burned down and it's for an eleven-unit building. The applicant is constructing in an area where the existing basketball court is now. They are proposing to relocate that sports court to the north side of the swimming pool to still provide some for that recreational opportunity. Not be quite as large, but it will be on the north side of the swimming pool. With that, I know the applicant and his representative is here this evening, so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Tammy. Good evening. Commissioners David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant. Tammy said it very well, so I really don't have anything to add at the moment. I'm gonna turn it over to Mark Sanford, who's the architect on the project. He can tell you a little bit more about the specifics of the building that is being proposed. As Tammy said, it is a replacement, one for one, in terms of number of units of the building that burned down. Being constructed on a flat site, one of the few flat parts of the, the property to provide for ADA accessible units. So I'll turn it over to Mark. We'll certainly be here and happy to answer any questions the commission has and then happy to respond to anything else that might come up. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Mark Sanford, the architect for Elevate Living. We are replacing an eleven-unit building which did burn on a, on another site. And this new site will be definitely flatter. The two buildings, it's actually in two pods. There are apartment units that, buildings will be split. But they'll be very relatively close to the architecture that's of the other apartment buildings. The area that the old building was at is, will become green space. Which will help that area that's up on the upper areas. It's a little treacherous to build up in that area. This new site will accommodate ADA accessibility along with parking and apartments. And also the new basketball court will be built over by the, the pool. I can't add too much more to what Tammy already had said, but we did work with the planning department and with Public Works to work some of the issues out. Which we did prior to submitting the plans. And if there's any questions, we are here. We have the representatives of the engineering that happened, that worked on the site as well as the building owner. Thank you.
Then I would now open this up for public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on the record for or against this item, if you would come to the podium? Alright. Seeing no one moving, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, thoughts?
I guess question for staff, if we can bring that prior picture back up? Driving around up there, is this the one that burnt down?
No. And there's, Diana, can you bring it up in the packet? There you go. See where the, the red is around? That's the building that burned.
So what are we gonna do with that hole that's currently there? And slope?
One of our engineers to answer that. I, I can tell you we're going to turn that area back into green space. There was some impervious area that we will remove some of the concrete. That was used for the parking for that building and that will become green space again. Which will enhance that area.
Commissioner, are you asking sort of more topographically what will become of that?
I guess two things. I guess first of all, the ADA issue, I want to understand better. In other words, as I looked at it, and you drive up and park there and you look down into the hole where the building used to be.
Right.
And I don't know how far back it was, but if you put a new three-story building up there and you put parking right up to the building, wouldn't that meet ADA requirements to that building and footprint?
Some of that, there are slope issues that ADA parking needs to be one percent or less. And it's very difficult up in those areas to get that one percent slope. And also to get the connection from the building to the parking, it's usually a gap. It, it's built on a very hilly topography. And it was bridges and steps, if you look at the other buildings, very difficult to get that to work out. Excuse me. And then, and thank you, Tom. And there's also a five percent slope for the fire department as well, for getting to the building. So we're improving that with the new construction on the new site.
I'm sure I'm not gonna be clear. So when you build a, let's say you're building a house on a slope and you drive up and you're on first floor and you got your garage and front door. But then down below it's sloped, so you, you've got your exit doors down below for patio to go out the back. If this same building footprint went in where the old building used to be, couldn't we put parking right up to that building or it would be flat as you drive in?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Cause currently it seems like it's just flat.
That would be ideal, but it's not, it wasn't conducive to get that completed. As far as getting it right up to the building. The other buildings are also built that way that there's not a connection right to the paving. I'm, I'm, this is Tom Jisba.
Tom Jisba, civil engineer for the project Elevate Living.
Hang on, Tom, could you sign in for us so we have your?
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the challenges here with this property is that it was built in the late sixties. And there was no consideration for ADA. And many of the buildings have very long articulated stairs and steps up or down to each building. And that's what this building had, was a series of stairs down with platforms and it was like going to Yellowstone Park and walking around. And obviously that wasn't acceptable. What we would have had to do, and I tried to get the just to get the ability to get the five percent slope that we would need to get down to parking that would then have to be elevated ten feet above where, where the original grade was. We still couldn't meet that grade. We would have had to essentially built a superstructure to allow parking to come up from, over from Martin Street on top of the bluff across and then some sort of elevators or walkway to the third floor. It just became economically unfeasible.
Just make sure I need talks where near the microphone so it records for the record.
Any other questions about that?
So on the two new buildings that are gonna go up, will those have elevators in them or does this?
These are three stories, so there's no requirement for elevators.
Now in that building, we are able to bring the parking up close to the building. So it is on ADA accessibility routes to make that building ADA accessible on the main level. So the first floor will have the ADA units that are compatible. And then the other two floors will have obviously stairs that, that access that level.
Okay.
And elevators are not required in these buildings.
So back to my original question, then I guess the current hole that's there where the old building used to be, which is again, a hell of a slope and you're at that upper level looking down where the building used to be. And of course, you're getting lots of washout unfortunately with the rains we've had down to the road below. I guess, how do we engineer that without a large retaining wall?
Well, it'll have to be tiered to some extent or put some retaining walls in as needed. To, in order to establish a safe viable green space down on the original pad level.
And the amount of retaining walls and engineering you've gotta do for that, we can't just shore up that whole thing and again have parking coming in from, I guess what would be third floor of that building and then have two floors down below it?
Well, we did a, a civil design and the whole team decided we need to move. We couldn't handle it. We couldn't get to five percent. And we had to, we would have had to create a superstructure for that new parking that you would like to have from Martin up above. And that would have been as expensive as a building. Or we would have had to backfill and bring in, you know, a thousand cubic yards of dirt and then create retaining walls for it. It just wasn't and isn't feasible to rebuild. Especially because now we have to build from the, from Martin Drive above. Very difficult, both in construction and trying to make it work from a A use standpoint and ADA, especially with ADA. This property couldn't have been built to meet ADA back in the, when it was built, sixty-six. Yeah.
Out of the rest of the structures that are there, again, unfortunately, there's been three fires, I think, in the complex. Two have been rebuilt on their current location, if I recall correctly. This is the one that's being moved. I guess, how many others? If there's a fire event or some other damage which would require it to be rebuilt to modern standards, how many others are basically not capable of being rebuilt where they currently are located? Is this a rarity or is it the majority?
I'd say it's over fifty percent, so that makes it majority.
Yeah.
But, you know, Elevate Living has stepped up the plate twice and if it happens again, they'll step up the next time.
Hi, Tom Pennington, I'm with Elevate Living with the owners. So this one is kind of a rarity when it comes to rebuilding it back. And the topography on it is, if you look at the ground level of the foundation footprint of the existing building that was there to Martin Drive up top, we're talking about an almost forty-foot elevation change. So to get a building back in there and meet everything and not only get it back for accessibility for future residents, but get it to where it's safe for fire rescues, ambulance, whatever the case may be, i- it's just isn't feasible. And you had asked about other buildings up there if we have a problem. This building is one of the most unique buildings on that whole complex over there because of where it sat. The one that burnt back in, I believe it was two thousand and eleven before we acquired the property, that one was able to be built back right on the same footprint and the ground level units are at grade of the parking lot. The current building, five, that we're in the process of building back now, where it is, we did have to build a retaining wall just to hold back the parking lot side. But the ground level of the foundation would bring it up to where the second floor is accessible to the parking lot, just like the, the old building was. So in order to do that, on those buildings, it worked out perfect. This building where that current parking lot is on Martin Drive, if you were, when the building was there, when you were standing on the parking lot looking at the building, you were eye level with the roof line of the building. That's how far down the building sat.
Mister Pennington, could you sign in for us? Thank you.
Question for you guys to clarify. You said that there would be the five percent fire department slope that you guys could not meet. Are you referring to the Hackberry Court side or?
The, on the Martin Drive side, where the, where the existing parking lot is now, if we were to put that building back in order to get the fire trucks in there and, and be able to get the accessibility of the building, we'd have to install a new parking lot or an additional parking lot. And in order to go from that current parking lot to that where that new one would be, we would not be able to maintain that percentage that the fire department requires in order to get trucks down to it. We would way exceed that uphill climb for a fire truck.
Nope, I understand. I just wanted to clarify which side you were talking about for that and everything like that. My next question is actually in regards to one of the emails that we received about the easements. Has city reviewed the locations of the easements and the specific language that was referenced in that email?
Yes, city staff, our Public Works Department, myself, we all looked at it. We looked at those original easements. From a staff perspective, we don't see an issue. It's pretty standard language. There is a wide enough easement to accommodate the property. It's, it's been there for quite some time, so I'm not an attorney, obviously, but staff did not see an issue with the easements as they are currently written and recorded.
I have some questions if I can. I'm gonna start with some just staff report comments. So it says the existing proposed site is gonna be turned back into, you said, green space and parking lot. So you made a comment that the parking lots have to meet a certain percentage, so if I can't get there with the building, how do I get there with a new parking lot?
It's just green space.
It's, it's just green space. You're talking about the, the former building?
It's all gonna be green space.
Yes.
Okay. Another question, I'm not an expert on ADA or anything, but not all the units in the whole complex have to be ADA compliant, correct? You've said just certain, certain percentage have to be, correct?
That's correct.
Would you agree that no matter how you rebuild this building, it'll be more ADA compliant today if you put it on the existing site than what it was in seventy-four?
Probably not.
Probably not?
No, because of the elevation change. You're talking about the existing site. We have such a, a deviant difference in the elevation change that when you're at the parking lot level, you were looking at the roof line of that building and just try and get an ADA ramp. You can only go thirty feet with a ramp before you have to hit a landing. It would be a series of terracing ramps to get down to the third floor of that building, cause the main foundation is so far down.
Yeah, I understand getting into the building would be just as complicated as it is today. But the billing itself would be more ADA compliant with new regulations than in seventy-four, correct?
I don't think it would be more compliant, cause you can, you can say that some of those units are compliant already. Doors are widened up, hallways were wide enough, you just couldn't get to it. The new building's more compliant, yes. But the old building, the old, to build on the old site is, would not be more compliant.
Okay. So going back to the existing site, wouldn't make it any worse, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm trying to get to. You could at least get back to the standard that it was when it was built in seventy-four, correct?
Well, again, recall though, when the property was built, there was the, it didn't have to comply with the ADA. The ADA, ADA did not exist.
I, I understand that.
So, so the replacement building?
I see what you're saying.
Right. So the replacement building will have ADA compliant units in it. The old building did not, and I think these guys have explained that it, it cannot because of the grade, because when you're standing in the parking lot, you're looking at the roof.
True. I, I guess where I'm going is I don't believe that you have to have any ADA units in this building at all. I, I
In the whole complex.
No, you have them throughout the complex today, right? Other ADA units today in the building? I mean, you built building and, you built two buildings since seventy-four. I've assumed they both had to comply with ADA, correct?
Uh, Tom Jisba here again. The one that we just are finishing up now on Tanglewood Drive. The ramp from the parking lot to the two main entryways on the second floor meet the ADA max slopes. Okay, so those, that one that we just built is ADA compliant with regard to egress. Many of the others have a series of, of steps and ramps. And from that perspective, they're not ADA compliant. And we felt that we didn't meet ADA on this new building. And if, if you had ever seen it, you would, you would be hard to believe it. But there were three or four different ramps and steps on this original building that was something that most people probably couldn't handle if they were over fifty. You know, safely throughout the, the winter weather.
Sure.
And so in that respect, it's a good thing to be able to build a new building at this time and meet ADA. Because it, the old building was not, not in compliance in, in any way, stretch or form.
And I will say, I spoke to the chief building official about this. It is his opinion that this building must be ADA compliant. They don't have a choice.
And that was our assumption in the design as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Another question, so today, how does the parking work at the pool? Because of, I mean, people can't obviously walk there, cause you guys said this is up and down and cross bridges and all kinds of terrain. So I assume people are driving down to the pool today when they use the pool over the summer. So by putting this building in that area, how does that affect the parking? Not related to the new apartment building, but parking related to the pool?
If you look on the site drawing, we now have a sidewalk that loops to the north and then back around. And, and that's at ADA requirements as well. And it's probably more ADA compliant with respect to the surrounding buildings than it was before.
Yeah, I was more talking about the parking, physically cars parking there, cause where they've parked at in the past, now you're gonna have a parking lot in a new building.
There, there was no parking for the swimming pool before.
Yeah, they, they park on the easement. If you go out there and you've ever been out there, they park on the easement. If you look at that Sarpy GIS aerials from all the last years, that's where they all park at, is they all park on that easement road. So I'm just trying to make sure we're not making the parking worse.
Park there. We didn't take much away other than the parking there at the southwest corner. You know, they can still park around the curve.
I guess, when you look at that picture from where that sidewalk starts on Plan East, you've lost all you've lost all that parallel parking from that point all the way around the curve. So, I don't know how many, how many cars have parked, I'm just, I'm just, I'm going through some of the concerns that some of the neighbors brought up was parking on that road, and now, now we've taken away some parking along that easement.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at that distance, you've got, what, seven or eight stalls, perpendicular stalls? So, that's probably three parallel stalls, something like that, maybe four. I, I think also the assumption that everybody drives to the pool may not be correct as well. You're right, it's a very steep site, but you do have roads that loop throughout the site. It's kind of a, uh, it's a place where you could walk on the road if you wanted to. So, I think people also use the road as a way to walk. It's a little bit of a hike from some of the buildings, but you could certainly walk to the pool within the property as well.
I guess, a question for staff is, for the ADA requirements, do they, for computing number of units percentages? Is it for the entire site, or is it per building?
That's the million dollar question. So, when I spoke to the chief building official, he said, you know, it probably could be interpreted a couple of different ways 'cause you're dealing with the ADA specific regulations, you're also dealing with what building code said. He said, in his opinion, because of the age of this complex and the fact that the original buildings, none of them are ADA compliant, in his opinion, any new building that they build is going to have to be ADA compliant.
Okay.
On, on its own merit, though, right?
Correct.
In other words, the answer to your question, I think, I don't wanna speak for you, is that the ADA compliance is, at least in this case that we're talking about tonight, is based on that new building.
Correct.
I guess where my question was, was, you know, building a, the ADA one-story building down below and allowing them to rebuild where that one was, a more topographically improved unit, so you had less of the slip risk, but wasn't ADA. I, I understand that getting the ADA is very difficult, the five percent is difficult, it's not economical, and probably not even really feasible in a realistic society up, up, up there. But my question was mostly, if you built an ADA compliant one-story building down below and rebuilt your three-story building up there, would that be allowed? I don't know the economics or the, whether that's even something you guys would wanna entertain.
Not in our chief building official's opinion, no.
Okay, and that's what, that's where I was getting at with that. My next question is, does the pool need to have parking? I guess, it, it kinda goes to what Mr. Arnie was saying. The site as a whole is usually computed, you know, number of stalls. We're putting eleven stalls in, do we need to add more stalls than that to bring that whole site up to enough stalls?
I do not necessarily think the pool needs its own parking stalls, its own specific parking stalls. I think in this case, you look at the development as a whole, you look at the flow that's currently there, you look at what opportunities for parking are there, and you also look at walkability of the site to that particular piece of the property.
Okay.
So, ju- just real quick, you'd said eleven stalls, we're actually putting twenty-two stalls, two of which will be handicapped.
Sorry, eleven units for twenty-two stalls.
Correct.
Yes.
Question for staff. Mr. Giff had a comment in his about, he tried or he requested to put apartments on his lot, ninety-seven was rejected. I don't know if that's necessarily more or less part of this conversation, just wanna understand that comment, if you have a response to that.
I do not have any knowledge of that. Did he say it was in nineteen?
Yeah, if you look at number ten in his original letter that he sent to all of us.
I'm not sure, I didn't check into that, and I've only been with the city since two thousand and four, so I can't speak to what may or may not have happened in nineteen ninety-seven.
I, I can share that there was a, the previous owner of that property did attempt to put apartments there. The homeowners in that area were vehemently against it, and I, I don't know if that's the reason, what the grounds for disapproval was, but there was an attempt.
And then, uh, his, his comment, or his bullet point number nine about the grade, and that's maybe, I don't know, have they seen his, his questions or comments?
Yes, they have.
So, probably for the engineer, he says something about that the existing grade of the site out there is eleven fifty-nine, and the new proposed structure, is it eleven sixty-nine? Is there just a typo in his comments, or can you tell us about that a little bit?
Commissioner, I think you're right, actually, I think there is a typo, 'cause he's, as I read it, he's saying the current driveway elevation is eleven fifty-nine, and then when he goes to do his calculation, he starts with eleven sixty-nine, and I don't see ten feet in there that you would be adding. So, I, I think you are correct about that.
Yeah, when you go to the next page, I don't know if this is his drawing or your guys' drawing, it shows the existing, or the new elevation at eleven sixty-seven, I think at eleven sixty-nine. So, I don't know if that's his drawing or your drawing. And I'm, that's his drawing, so, so, so it's not planned to be at eleven sixty-nine?
This is the one you're talking about?
Yes.
That's his drawing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a lot of guys.
Yeah, this is, uh, Tom Jisba again, civil structural engineer. We submitted to the city, uh, site plans and site elevations, uh, and they were sent to minimize the grading effort and to ensure that we had a five percent max slope from the Hackberry Drive entryway up to the top of our parking stalls to the north. And everything about that centers around those requirements. There's nothing there that's unusual or any, um, of any exception, so I'm a little bit puzzled by what he's, he's asking there. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, I'm just trying to clarify his concerns, right? That's why we're here, right?
Is there a way to put a, something up on the screen, or I can pass it around to you?
Yes.
See that thing on the ceiling right over there? Our modern day Elmo. Did you miss the memo? That it was six? We figured you were coming at halftime.
You can use this mic too, right here?
Thank you, Tammy. I just wanna make the point, uh, commissioners, that this is the house of the, of the neighbor who wrote the letter. As you can see, the house is surrounded by trees. This is the area where the, the photo that he provided with this letter is from. He calls that his front yard, technically, I suppose it is, but in terms of his house, he's not going to see this new building, certainly not in the summertime, and, and in a very filtered way in the wintertime. So, I just, I wanted to point that out for the record.
Quick question for applicant. I think what I'm, I think what I've heard is, it is feasible to build an ADA compliant apartment in, in where the old one was, it burnt down. It's just not economically feasible. And if that's the case, have you attached a number? Did you actually pursue what it would cost to make it feasible?
It's actually, it's actually two things. So, it, yes, it's feasible to build a building that is ADA compliant. It is not feasible to get ADA compliancy from the parking lot to the building. So, I can have a building there, but I can never get a person with a wheelchair in it. So, I can meet the, I can meet the demands of ADA, but getting somebody into it is unfeasible without doing all the extra added legwork that goes along with it, either raising the building or cutting a road with a secondary parking lot down there. To do all that, it's like a three million dollar cost increase to the construction project, and I can't get fire trucks to it. So, even though I can get the car down there to get somebody into the building in a wheelchair, I can't get a fire truck there to save them in the event of a fire.
I'd, I'd say too, I mean, I'm sort of surrounded here by engineers. You know, engineers will tell you, if you get them, give them enough money, they can do pretty much anything. I think that's what we're talking about here. Could, could you, is it humanly possible to build an ADA compliant building on that site? I, I suppose so. Is it any way reasonable or feasible to do so? No, I think, as you just heard, it's a three million dollar cost to build the building there, the new building estimated cost is...
Yeah, I mean, just rough numbers, it's, from what we're seeing, it's a three million dollar increase.
So, it's a three million dollar?
Just to try to get that ADA compliance and meet, you know, what the fire department needs for trucks and everything else. And honestly, at, at that rate, I still can't guarantee that I can meet all the standards of everything.
So, it's a three million dollar delta. I think the other thing I'd point out in that regard is this is not something that the applicant is choosing. This is a building that burned down. That building is gone by a natural disaster, so that, that's why we're here. It's not like they said, oh, we don't like that building anymore, we're gonna knock it down and build this other one.
Question for you guys. Is it possible to, and I'm just crossing all my Ts, and you guys, I know, have done planning sessions, you've looked at all these. What's the reason you can't build an ADA parking lot on Hackberry Court?
So, so, part of the reason that I can't come off of Hackberry Court is, right now, the current buildings that are on the other side of Hackberry Court, um, from there, from that parking lot to where this building was, it's lined with garages. I would have to remove, um, two banks of garages, which were total about twenty-two, twenty-three garages in order just to get access and to have a parking lot and make it safe to come in and out without somebody getting hit and cross traffic.
I'm just thinking it through, so.
Yeah, I, I think it shows on that picture that you got there where it is, you can kinda see the garages that line right along that, that red line there that goes down the road of Hackberry.
I guess my question would be of, put the ADA stalls there for the first floor, and then use, utilize the existing parking off of Martin for the other two floors that do not have to be the ADA access, was what my question was.
I still have to remove something for current residents in order to do that.
And, well, you are removing something for current residents, and, and it's different of a recreational versus garage. I'm just asking the question of, you know, in your current plan, you're removing the, the courts. And so, the question is, you know, if, is it possible to put four ADA stalls on Hackberry? You're saying it's to, you'd have to remove the garage, at least one bank of garage, we mean to lose this garage, um, and then you're still dealing with the parking lot on Martin and having to get maybe not ADA, but five percent slope for other minimums to getting it, so.
Correct, but still by doing that, I still can't get the fire department requirements on the front side or the backside by doing that. Um, my percentage grade to go from Hackberry up to a parking lot where the building would be to be ADA compliant in that back way, I would still be greater than five percent back there. And with the garages that are still, still currently there after I would remove one, I still don't think there's enough turning radius in order to get a fire truck in there. So, they would still have to then be on the backside of the garages, which would be, you know, I, I'm guessing right now, without actually going out and measuring it, over a hundred feet away from the building trying to fight a fire.
Yep, no, and, and that's what...
And you had, you had brought up the courts that we're gonna remove for the other one. We're actually, we're removing them, but we are replacing them. We're still putting one in.
Yeah, and I'm asking because I, you know, you've done more with the elevations and seeing the differentials and all that, and, uh, providing the slope of, you know, one percent for the ADA and everything like that, the turn radius and all that. That's why I'm asking, 'cause I know that you've already looked at these things.
Believe me, I, I would love to build back on that site, just for, you know, general construction purposes, it'd be great. I've already got my water sewer, my gas, everything is there, you know, the footprint is there. The problem is, is meeting the standards of everything else.
And then, last clarification, tonight, we are only talking about allowing them to put a new building over. We're not kind of dictating what they, what they're doing with the old site or anything like that, is that correct, staff? Or is that related to this? Or just?
I guess I don't know what you mean by what they're doing with the old site. Um, correct, this is specifically about relocating the building. I think we care about what happens with the old site, but...
I guess is, so, what they do with the old site of turning it to green space is part of what our resolution tonight would include, correct?
It's part of the package, yes.
Okay.
And I would say, Mr. Chairman too, I mean, we've represented on the record here that that's what we'll do with the site. So, I think that becomes part of essentially the application.
And, and it's on the site plan materials, so.
Question for staff. So, it's, we're kinda unique here, 'cause normally what happens is we do a development, we put some houses in, and then we, and then something comes over with a multifamily development, and we all sit here and the residents all come up and they complain, and they, we're kinda the opposite, right? If you think about it, normally, we get to talk about all the, I don't want it in my front yard, I don't want it in my front yard, well, this is obviously established and done, so how does that play into this whole conversation, just from a, kind of a big picture planning conversation? 'Cause these people went in and built their houses knowing that that development was already there, right? It wasn't like it was after the fact, and then it was, it was a chance, it was multifamily, it was getting up in their front yard.
Correct, this is already permitted use, the development is already there. Um, the ways I look at it, um, from a planning perspective, they are not increasing the density. Yes, they are moving a building, yes, there is going to be some impact to neighbors, but in my opinion, it's fairly minimal, uh, compared to what it could be. So, all things that we take into consideration when we look at this type of a situation.
How many units were in the burnt down building?
Eleven, so we're going back exactly the same.
Same number of bedrooms, everything like that?
Correct.
It's essentially the same footprint.
Correct, yeah.
I have a, I have a question for you or for them, so, one of his other comments in here was just the overall look and what I would call nuisance issues and things like that on site. Um, I was out there today, and I would agree with him, that I probably saw more, more garage doors that were broken than actually doors that worked today, so how do we?
I can actually explain that.
Yeah.
So, for the last week and a half, um, I've had guys out there going through garage doors, checking them, um, in order to get doors, springs, whatever replaced as we go into winter. Um, a lot of times garages are rented, people close a door, they store stuff in it. I have no idea what is going on with it on the inside. So, for the last week and a half, I've actually had crews out there going through, checking them, um, putting together a list, trying to figure out what needs to be done on them. So, that, that's the garage issue.
How about some of the other things, you saw his pictures, I see.
I did, I did, and you, you know, the one picture that he put in there of a picture of a dumpster sit, or a mattress sitting next to a dumpster. We get people all the time, whether it's residents or people in the neighborhood who throw stuff away in the dumpsters, big items such as that cannot be dumped by the trash truck that picks up the dumpsters. So, those items actually have to be pulled out every morning, set beside it, and then usually, within a week or so, we have a special truck come by and actually do a special pickup of all big items, because they can't be dumped in the regular trash truck.
And just to clarify, the week delay is not, they, they have to call for a special pickup, so it's not them waiting a week. They, they call that day, it takes the trash company a week to get the special pickup out there.
Thank you.
I have, I have, currently, I have four guys on site there five days a week. I have twenty-four hour maintenance there, so five days a week, I have four guys running around that place every morning picking up any trash that comes out of a dumpster, blows out of it, or a truck dumps it. It's, it's a large multifamily complex, so inevitably, there's always gonna be a piece of trash somewhere. It's just nothing that we can police on a twenty-four hour basis.
And along those lines with, uh, one of the complaints mentioned in it, the storm debris that hasn't been removed, 'cause I've been there twice this week, and it's still there, so is that happening soon?
Are, are you talking about the one branch there by the pool?
Yeah, the limb.
Yep, it is, it's actually been put on the books for the last two weeks. Um, unfortunately, I'm at the mercy of a vendor at that point, so as soon as they can get out there, they'll come out and take care of it. I would like to on that point, I know we have that branch down. I don't know if you happen to look at Mr. Giff's property over there? There's like five hundred trees and branches that are laying down, um, that fall onto that roadway that we share and everything else, um, that we typically take care of. So, you know, we try to do as much as we can, but again, I don't do that stuff in-house, so we hire it out as soon as they can get there. That's what we ask for from them.
Questions for staff, from the easement perspective, and I just read, reading the letter here we received today, to the extent any of the proposed new parking places on the new site plan are actually on the easement, that's a private easement that he can enforce, correct? Again, it's not a city issue.
Correct, it's a private easement. Our engineering staff did look at it, um, you know, kind of the opinion was, there's enough width there that it's feasible. Otherwise, staff would not have been okay with it. Um, but it's, it's wide enough that the parking stalls should fit without impeding any ingress, egress through that area.
But they're within the easement area in terms of the current site plan where it shows the parking along the roadway there? Or again, I guess, without an ALTA survey, we probably don't know.
Correct. I mean, that's how they're shown, but...
Does the applicant know by chance, and I, the parking places that are along here on the roadway? Did you guys do an ALTA?
This is Justin Insinger, I'll sign in.
If those are within or outside of the easement area?
They, the proposed parking that we show on that road is outside of the easement, the easements to the south.
Let me put this up on Elmo here, just to...
It's up. It's up.
So basically, the easement area he's referring to would be outside of the parking area.
He was anticipating your.
Again, it's hard to match up.
It's hard to see.
Yep, did she, this, this, this one came in just us today, do you have that one to put up there? That actually shows the easement on it.
Yeah, we don't have the items that came in today, so.
Mr. Levy, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Sure.
Let's let him have it.
But I believe he's also using an overlay which could be a little bit off too.
Right, yeah.
That's correct.
That's not.
I guess on the picture that's on there is the, uh, dotted areas, the easement.
Yeah, without an ALTA survey, I don't think. We'd know.
It's gonna come down to feet or inches even. I don't know if that represents easement or if that's something else on the layers.
I believe from what we're looking at here with the red line that's in this picture here, it would be the darker line further down to the bottom. Not the one in the center of the road there, from the curve. But the darker line that comes to the point.
So, so the easement, Tom, is the, the south half of the road essentially?
Correct.
So it's actually quite, on that drawing where they're, they're lined up there on the actual survey drawing, you can see, the north line of the easement and the south line of the parking area are, are some distance apart. I mean, not only do they not overlap, they don't touch, there's some, some feet of asphalt in between them.
And, and again, that's an overlay, um, we, we can only pull in that ALTA survey based on the PDF. Um, so it's not gonna be.
Unless you go out and actually do the ALTA.
Correct.
But there's, there's margin for error there too, I mean, again, it's not like we're talking inches.
I'll leave that issue for you and the neighbor.
Fair enough.
I guess, Mr. Arnie, as I was flipping through here, we talked about where Mr. Giff lived. Looks like we have two other folks complaining about potential sightlines, do we know where the Wilsons or the Keverns live from a map perspective?
Wilson's of east, east across forest, there's a house with a, up one more, nor, north of where she just highlighted.
I've highlighted Mr. Wilson's house.
And then that lot one, he also owns to the north of that, correct?
That's correct, his house is actually on lot two, right here.
I, I think again, though, Commissioner Arnie, you kinda made this point earlier. Uh, the, there's a multifamily housing complex there today. There will be a multifamily housing complex there if this is approved. Uh, well, either way tomorrow, um, the only difference for those residences, there will be one building a little bit closer to them, actually lower down on the site.
Mister, uh, Mrs. Van Horn has the, um, Keverns property highlighted, they are actually on Lafayette Lane.
Okay, thank you.
So, am I saying that correct, Tammy, that there's a house essentially between them and this, where this new building would be?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe one more question, so the, the, where the building is that you guys tore down, you said you're gonna make that green space, obviously we know it's super steep. So to me, you've lost a little bit of, say, recreational area for your residents that live there. None of them are here opposing it, so they must all be happy with your plan, right? But is it really just gonna be a slope and, and that's all we're gonna do, are we actually gonna put some retaining walls and try and give them some actual spots to have, stuff, events and things like that, I guess?
So, so currently, right now, when we demoed the old building, we did leave the three existing retaining walls in place. So that hillside, if you actually were to walk it, it is terraced right now with, with some retaining walls. We'll have to probably add one more down at the bottom, just where the foundation used to be. Um, and then probably see and do whatever down there, maybe, you know, wait and see what, what, what's needed at that point, you know, uh, once we get some grass to grow. You know, I don't, I'm not opposed to throwing some picnic tables, grill, whatever case may be, whatever residents may want. But I just, as of right now, just green space.
There's a good flat space there now. Yeah, there's a pretty good sized flat path where the building was, plus surrounding, so, right now, I mean, it's, it's quite usable. Other than the fact that we still have to plant grass and get it to grow.
Thank you.
Just a, a curious question, retaining walls that are there already, what are they made out of?
Um, they are, uh, real rotator retaining walls.
From the original construction?
Correct. I'm assuming original construction, before my time with it.
One more question, so, I believe that some of the people that are opposing this just walked in the door. And I'm just wondering because of the fact that we changed the meeting this month from seven o'clock to six o'clock, that that might have been missed on the memo. Can I make a motion to reopen the public hearing so we have a chance to hear from those folks?
You can, I would just point out that it was advertised for six, everyone's letter said six in the agenda.
I know, I know, but we also had one of us to know that not be here on time, so, we're just, I'm just. I didn't say any, I didn't say any names, so.
Yeah, I, and that, and that's up to the commission, I don't have a problem with it, but I just want to note for the record that everything did say six o'clock.
I agree with you, uh, if anybody would care, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing becau, because of the change of time of the meeting this month.
Motion by Arnie?
Second.
Second by Ackley? Do we need to vote on that motion then?
Yes.
You guys understand what we're doing, right?
I understand, like, we were here at six.
Yep, we all were here.
Yeah.
I, I think it's only fair to give them the opportunity to speak, though.
Fair enough.
Mr. Ackley, were you the second?
Yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right. This time, I am going to reopen the public hearing for item three B. Before anyone stands up, I, for those who just joined us, I am enforcing the, uh, the golden rule, treat others as you wish to be treated. We do have a large number of people here tonight, so I will be enforcing a five-minute rule for those, uh, there's a clock in the back to record. When you do come on up, will you please state your name and address for the record clearly and sign in? And then let us know what your thoughts and wishes are, but at this time, the public hearing for item three B is now reopened. If anyone wishes to speak on the record for or against the item, please come up to the stand.
Thank you very much, my name is Marty Giff, uh, thank you for, uh, reopening the meeting, I didn't realize it started at, uh, at earlier time. Well, I showed up just before seven, so, anyway, I'll make it quick since I'm delayed this a little bit, but, um, the, uh, this whole issue, I live next door to this property and, uh, have a house next door and, um, um, I'm certainly opposed to this, the, uh, uh, one thing, you know, this is, is not necessarily a question whether it's legal or not, because there's not a, a, a change of zoning being requested here. But, uh, you know, and, and, uh, it's, it's more an issue of whether this is the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. And if it was only, uh, simply, uh, whether it met legal requirements, then, uh, the planning director could have done that. Um, in this case, it takes a little bit of, um, a feeling, uh, and, uh, insight, from what I'm gonna tell you and get your, and hopefully, uh, relay that information to you to, to, uh, further your, uh, knowledge of this to make your opinion, so. I'm gonna start out briefly with just a little bit of the history of this, um, first of all, you know, I, I serve on a planning board, I understand the situation, uh, that you're in and the responsibilities and, and, uh, and what it is you're doing here, so it's, it's, um, it's, I understand where you're at, but, uh, what I wanna say though is that, um, I'm not a typical neighbor who, uh, is complaining because we have a cornfield in my backyard that I wanna see, uh, remain a cornfield forever and keep the serenity, while somebody else pays the taxes and maintains it, that's, that's not what this is all about. Um, the Fontaine Hills Apartments were built in about nineteen seventy by Joe Dennis, who developed all of Fontaine Hills and the, the whole area. Uh, Joe Dennis and when Jeff Renner, his son-in-law, uh, had the property, they actually built the apartments themselves, uh, they sold those. Uh, they retained a property next door that was, um, roughly five and a half acres and, um, they, uh, after selling the apartments off to, uh, the Fontaine Hills Apartments off, they requested back in apparent, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven, to, to build additional apartments on the six acres or five and a half acres that they retained, uh, which is, uh, right, uh, borders up to what this property that we're talking about and also borders up to where this structure is, I mean, this is literally forty feet away from where the structure is that, uh, is being requested to be located here today. Uh, in nineteen ninety-seven, the city of Bellevue, uh, denied, uh, them the opportunity to rezone and build a small apartment complex there, um, because it did not conform to the neighborhood. Then, uh, they gave up on that venture and they elected to sell the lot, and that, at that point, I approached, I approached, uh, Mr. Dennis and ended up buying that five and a half acre lot from him for purposes of building my residence. So in nineteen ninety-eight, I bought the lot and built, built a house, now, I bought a lot that was adjacent to an apartment complex. Um, being adjacent to a complex is not the most desirable thing, I'm a, I am a real estate appraiser, I understand that. Um, the, um, the fact that it was there was something that I had to live with. I, uh, I did a lot of work, uh, to make that property, that five and a half acres work, so that I could build a home that was far removed as much as possible from the, um, apartments themselves and that I, I was, uh, not looking at them, I was not hearing them, uh, as much as I would be had I built somewhere else. Um, and, uh, so, you know, I, I, I went through that, built my home in nineteen ninety-eight and my home is still where I live today. Um, now the apartment complex, uh, the, the apartment owners in the complex wanna rearrange their building layout and move this, uh, building that was burned down onto the edge of my property and onto the edge of their property also, and, uh, that adversely impacts, uh, my home and my neighbor's home, so. Uh, the planning department recommended approval because it conforms with zoning and the comprehensive plan. I, I, I questioned, uh, that recommendation, and I'm gonna start with the zoning, first of all, uh, the current zoning on that property is RS one twenty, single family with a PUD overlay, planned unit development overlay. The RS one twenty zoning is for detached, single-family homes on twelve thousand, minimum twelve thousand square foot lots. Those are big lots, and I don't have to probably tell you, that's, that's the second largest lot requirement, um, for lot sizes in the Bellevue zoning, and the next is residential estate, which is what my lot is, which is an acre. So, um, you know, you're looking at very low density is what the RS one twenty zoning is, and, um, I, I certainly question, um, the comment or the, the, the conclusion that it, that this project conforms with zoning.
So, uh, gotta interrupt you cuz it, the five minutes, I wanna make sure to give everyone, uh, and maintain that so that we can all progress in a orderly manner tonight.
Uh, I'll go quick, the apartment, so apartments is on one twenty, excuse me, am I done?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to allow the, anyone else that would like to come up and keep going, that was five full minutes. So like I said earlier, I ha, because the number of people here, I am enforcing that five minute as, uh, strict as I can. If you wanna come up to, and, on the microphone so I can hear, so they can have that on the record? Sorry, they don't have any microphones in the back there, so.
I thought I was talking loud enough. Okay, my name is Robert Sink, I live at one-one-one Forest Drive. I'm directly, uh, east of the proposed building, I will cede my time to Mr. Giff.
All right, thank you, sir.
Uh, I, so I question why the RS one twenty zone is appropriate for apartments. I think that the city would be striving to bring non-conforming properties into, into the current regs, and I wonder why that's not happening here. Uh, as far as the PUD overlay, the first comment in the PUD, um, uh, requirements is that the intent is to encourage creative design and protect the health, safety and general welfare of existing and future residents of surrounding neighborhoods. And all, and the next comment says a PUD shall not be, uh, shall not have a substantial adverse effect on development in the surrounding area. And we have to, when you do a PUD, you have to submit a, a plan, uh, the plan has to have, uh, show easements and property lines. The plans that I've seen do not show any plans or, or easements. Um, I question whether the streets are adequate, as indicated in, in, in the plan requirements, uh, because access is via easement road. When I get to the easement road, that easement road is half my property. Um, if you drive down on the property next to the pool and even where the line shows there, my property line is where the blue line is, and I have an easement that extends forty foot onto their property, uh, and I provided that to you and I believe you have a copy. And I, I do not see anything in their, in their, uh, plans that show where the property line is, where that easement is. And I suspect, from what I can tell, that the parking for this, uh, facility is in that forty-foot area and it states that that cannot be impeded, and I will not allow it. I, I guess I questioned, um, uh, the, the easement was reviewed by planning staff. I don't, I don't understand how they, uh, didn't see this and how, uh, they can say that this is compatible and not adverse at, which are both requirements that are, uh, stated in the PUD, uh, guidelines. Uh, the easement doesn't provide for parking for residents, it doesn't allow parking, it's, it's for passing vehicles, so you can't park vehicles there. There's nowhere in this, in this development for, everybody in the pool, everybody in this whole complex comes to that pool, they drive over here cuz of the distance. Where are all those people gonna park? Now we're taking, now we're taking the basketball court away and we're taking, and we're putting more, um, uh, parking supposedly where the basketball court is. There's nowhere for any of these people to park that come to the pool, and they're gonna end up on my property and it's not gonna be allowed. Cuz it's, it's not allowed per the terms of the easement. The plans don't show anything about where dumpsters will be placed, but regardless where, uh, they attract rodents, they stink, they're visual disgrace, they have no screening. Uh, the dump trucks slam around at four o'clock in the morning, uh, when they empty these things. Uh, these conditions are certainly adverse to the surrounding area and certainly not compatible. Um, my house, I told you I built it in a way that wasn't, wasn't, that was least affected by this. I built it sixty feet up on a hill, they wanna, they wanna build, um, uh, on a ten-foot plateau. They wanna build a building that's roughly forty-two feet tall. Uh, forty-two feet on top of the ten-foot plateau puts it sixty, or fifty-two feet higher than the, than the, uh, the road right now and puts it up at elevations that are between my basement and my main level of my house. And that is certainly adverse to, uh, my property and, um, should be considered when looking at the requirements of the PUD. And, um, I guess, uh, I didn't conclude, I guess one of the last things I'll say is that normally, uh, normally in planning and development, there is a transitional zone between apartments, des-. between apartments, dense apartments and, and one acre estates. There's something to, you know, go to a single-family, uh, multi, I mean, uh, townhouse or something like that, a transition. This recreation area that was originally built, uh, for this apartment complex, in my opinion, was that area was this transitional zone between the apartments and the single family. Now they want to erode that, put apartments there and, and that we're going to have high-density apartments next to estate lots. That doesn't match and I think, I think you are aware of that. So I, 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 uh, staff recommended approval because it conforms to zoning. I don't, how does this property conform to the RS 120 zoning? Uh, how does this revised plan conform to the PUD requirements? How is the proposed project not adverse to the surrounding neighborhood? And how is the proposed project compatible with surrounding neighborhoods? With regards to comp plan, they recommended it, uh, to, because it conforms with the comp plan. The comp plan's a vision of the future. Uh, it's a tool to direct for future development. What is the comp plan for the vision, uh, comp plan for this area? Because, uh, in, in 1997, it was not acceptable to have these apartments down here, but now all of a sudden it is. What's changed between 1997 and now on the comp plan and the vision of the city?
So, sir, that was the second five minutes.
One last thing and I'm done. If the comp plan has changed and, and the vision for this area has changed, does that mean that it's now acceptable for me to come down with it in my empty property that I have down at the bottom of the hill to also come back in and put apartments in here? If that's what the vision is, I, I, uh, I'd be surprised. But anyway, I hope you take all this into consideration. If this was next to her to you, uh, I think you would, uh, oppose it also. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes for the chance to speak on the record for or against this item?
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Marcuzzo. I live at 209 Bellevue Boulevard South. And my reason for being here tonight is a practical reason. Um, I live on the corner of Forest Drive and Bellevue Boulevard. So in essence, I'm the toll bridge for everybody coming in and out of Fontaine Hills on the backside. The old site for the burnt-down condo, I'm sorry, apartment complex, um, had an entrance and exit that was on Hackberry Court and it dumped into Martin Drive. And it gave them simple exit from Fontaine Hills to Greg Road and on to their agendas. If they move the complex to our side of Hackberry Court, which is adjacent to Forest Drive, that puts 11 more parking place, I'm sorry, 22 more parking places, uh, for 22 cars. Um, I had the opportunity to be home this morning and I counted cars between 6:30 and 8:30. And there were 169 cars that came past my house between 6:30 and 8:30. If we multiply that by two, they have to either come home from work or come home from school between that 3:30 to 5:30 range. You double that and you have about a 340 car count. If you add 11 parking places and you multiply that by two, um, I'm sorry, 22 parking places, you multiply that by two, then you're going to have 44 additional entrances and exits into that area. Um, if you simply do the map, that's probably about a 13% increase in traffic on Forest Drive. Forest Drive is stressed as it is right now. I did not even count any cars between 8:30 and 3:30. So, um, it is a quite active road. Um, if you are not familiar with the, um, characteristics of that T-intersection, um, it is not the safest road in Bellevue. There's very little concern for the stop sign and speeding seems to be a common occurrence. My contention to the planning board tonight is if they would like to rebuild, I think the existing site that they were on is a very wonderful site. It eliminates 13% extra traffic on Forest Drive and apparently that end of the Fontaine, um, apartments seem to accommodate with that amount of traffic on that end. My contention is that if you put in the new site, you're just adding to the traffic that is existing. It's pretty much my story for this evening and I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item on the record?
We'll let him close.
With the, as the applicant, yes. Um, all right, seeing no more, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it back over to the commissioners.
Uh, need to give the applicant time to rebuttal.
Oh, I apologize. Close the public hearing and ask the applicant to come back up and rebuttal for any of the items that, uh, he wishes to address.
Well, Mr. Levy is coming forward. Um, just one thing that I want to address, uh, Mr. Giff, you missed this conversation earlier. But in regards to the RS 120, uh, zoning, one thing that I noted was this development is extremely unique. Uh, back in April 1967, the city council at that time approved the entire Fontaine Hills, Fontaine Hills development under the specific RS 120 zoning with the site plan approval. Not something we would do today. I can't account for why they did what they did 54 years ago. However, within that specific variance or that ordinance, they outlined specific uses on specific pieces of property. So under that entire RS 120 zoning, single families allowed, duplexes are allowed, multifamily is allowed, golf courses allowed, just depends on where it's at in the development. So under that 1967 ordinance that we have, yes, this apartment complex is allowed per that original approved ordinance. So technically, that's why I view it as in compliance with the zoning because it is compliance with what was approved at that time.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners again, David Levy, Barrett Home Off Firm on behalf of the applicant. I appreciate, um, you know, we had nearly an hour-long, uh, discussion before this and we covered a lot of issues. Appreciate the commission's questions. I think we were able to address all of them. I hope we were. If not, please, uh, you let me know and, and we'll, we'll continue that dialogue. I think that dialogue and, and what Tammy just said, uh, addressed most of Mr. Giff's points, but I do want to, uh, hit on a couple of things. Uh, the dumpster for the new apartment building will be on the north side of the building, farthest from Mr. Giff's property, uh, and will be screened by a dumpster enclosure. Um, he, he noted that his house is 60 feet up on a hill and by his calculation and his statements, the top of the roof of the new building would be below his first floor. He said it would be between his basement and his first floor. So if he looks out his first floor windows and looks straight, he would not see this building as I understood what, what he told you a few minutes ago. Uh, again, I really want to emphasize, this is an existing multifamily apartment complex. The number of apartments is not increasing. It's not changing. The number of bedrooms is not changing. The new building is really nearly identical to the building that it's replacing and many of the buildings on this site. The last thing I'll address, Mr. Marcuzzo's comments about traffic. Lot of assumptions in there, right? That everybody who lives in these apartments has two people driving during the hours of 6:30 and 8:30 to and from work. Uh, we know with the pandemic that, that is less and less frequent. Um, that everybody, uh, there has two cars. And that everybody there who has two cars drives in and out only that one way that goes past this house and doesn't go out other ways from the property. But even if we go with all of Mr. Marcuzzo's, uh, assumptions, that that's 22 cars, right? We have 22 parking spaces, 22 cars over those 120 minutes between 6:30 and 8:30. That's one additional car every six minutes, if my math is correct, every five minutes, something like that. It's a, a nominal, really probably imperceptible increase in the traffic. You also heard him say that he counted 169 cars over those two hours today. It, it's not as if this road is going from untraveled and we're adding 22 cars to zero. I think you have to look at that context, but also that's over two hours. If those 22 cars go in and out or go out of there over those two hours, that's like one more car every five minutes. That's all I have to, to supplement in rebuttal. I'm happy and the project team is happy to answer any questions that the commission may have remaining. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Open this back up to the commissioners. Commissioners, thoughts, questions, wishes?
I guess for the benefit of Mr. Giff and Mr. Marcuzzo and anyone else who came in after the fact, we did have about a 50-minute discussion ahead of time. And I think, uh, probably half your commissioners up here wish that we could put the building back exactly where it was. And unfortunately, for numerous reasons explained, um, becomes financially impracticable to do that. So again, from Tammy's perspective, and I think it's the right perspective, the old zoning allows for all of this area to be apartments. We're basically switching 11 for 11. Again, that was the discussion. So Mr. Marcuzzo, in terms of traffic, again, I appreciate it's going to come out one entrance instead of the other, but in terms of the overall going down Martin Drive at one point to the other, it's, uh, it, it's currently what we have there. Um, being a planning commissioner is absolutely no fun because you can't make everybody happy when we've got folks coming out on both sides of an issue. And I'm afraid we're going to have to agree to disagree on some of these from one side or the other. And ultimately, we've got city council yet. I guess the other thing I want to bring up, Mr. Giff, we did discuss your second letter that you submitted today, uh, that showed the easement area and there was quite a bit of discussion. As I understand it, there is no ALTA survey that was done. So in terms of where their boundaries are exactly compared to where this easement is, we don't have something to show us that. Uh, but the applicant indicated they think, again, based on some aerial calculations they made, that it's all on their side of the, the easement. I guess that again will be a issue between the private parties to figure out, uh, going forward. But we did have quite a bit of discussion on that. So I just wanted to make that clear for folks who came in late. So we've been doing this one now for about an hour and 15, so.
I've, uh, I got two, two questions or two items. Um, one, and this is for, um, the property manager. Um, who does the street, uh, the snow removal and maintaining the road? That would be those, uh, new parking spots?
It's going to all be private with the developer.
No, I'm saying who currently does.
So, so currently that is, uh, handled by ground builders, which is a landscaping company.
And who pays for them?
We do.
Okay. I, I just wanted to see who, who pays to maintain that road?
Yep, all roadways are, are subbed out to a private contractor. All internal sidewalks are handled within-house.
And then in terms of Mr. Marcuzzo's comment, um, I noted just, you know, double-checked on Google Maps, it does not look like there's a stop sign where, uh, Forest Drive meets Hackberry. Um, it looks like it's just a three-way and there's a stop sign on the, the west, uh, the east side. Um, does anyone know that area enough to know if that's true or not? And the reason I'm asking is we are switching 22 spots from one side of the property to another and wondering whether or not a stop sign has to be put and if the grade there is acceptable for a stop spot. Uh, you can't stop on a too, too large of an incline. Um, just didn't know if that was addressed by the city at all.
Are you referencing stop sign on private property or?
Well, I guess we're switching 22 units from one side of the property to the other.
I, I guess what I can say is from an engineering standpoint, our, uh, two engineers that reviewed it did not see an issue with traffic or changing existing conditions that are out there today.
Okay. So.
I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Marcuzzo, but I think the issue of the stop sign was that Forest Drive and.
Yeah, his was much further south. It just made me wonder about the exit where we're going to congest those 22 right there because the other thing is that 22 people or the 22 units, let's just say max, some may go north, some may go east, some may go south. Um, we have no idea, but just at that one spot, when I was looking at, um, things, I noted there was no stop sign. I didn't know if that was an issue or not. I like to voice concerns on that, um, so.
And, and I would just say for the record, virtually all traffic is going to go south because that's the way out of the complex. Uh, if you go east, it's a dead end. If you go north, you're just winding around through the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. So, all right.
Chairman, just one quick comment. Mr. Casey, I think you, the, just want to pick up on the point that you just made. If I understand you correctly, traffic from the complex is going south today because that's the better way to go out of it.
It's virtually the only way unless you want to spend five minutes weaving through the neighborhood to get over Martin Drive up to Bellevue Boulevard North.
So in other words, moving this building to this location isn't going to change materially the traffic coming out the south end of the complex? The complex already comes and goes through the south end.
I would submit that the, the, the previous location, most of that traffic probably does go through the complex to Martin Drive, uh, east. But when you move it down here, they're going to go Forest Drive out. I mean, that's the quickest way out. Logically, that's the way people would go.
But some may, some from the existing location before it burned down may have gone this way as well.
I can't imagine why they would, but yeah, they could go anyway. But, uh, if you're taking the, 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 the least, uh, the easiest way out, you would have went toward Martin Drive from the previous location.
Okay, I appreciate it and I know usually you're the ones who ask questions. So thank you for indulging me.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to throw the wrench in things here. I, I came into the meeting tonight, uh, filling, uh, in, in interest of transparency. I live on Forest Drive, uh, but I felt like I could be objective by applying the principles of, of the planning commission. Uh, but after hearing some of the concerns tonight, uh, I, I no longer feel I can be, uh, objective. Uh, and so I'm going to abstain from whatever vote is made.
I would, I would then ask the city, but I would believe that you would maybe need to recuse yourself from the room till we're done with this item then? I, I don't either. I'm just trying to figure out, so.
I'd, I'd say if there's a motion, let's.
All right.
If nobody else is going to make a motion, I will. I recommend approval based on conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Cutsford?
Second.
Second by Hinkins? I think to help some technical difficulties, would anyone else like to make the motion cuz it's not allowing, uh, Sue to note that she made the.
It's, it's okay. We can do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Mr. Casey?
Abstain.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Ms. Cutsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
No.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Four voted yes. Mr. Arnie voted no. Mr. Casey abstained. Motion carried.
This mo- this item will go for public hearing in front of the city council on November sixteenth? Double checking. Okay, on, on November sixteenth? Alright. Moving on to item three C. Request to rezone lot one C, except part for NRD, Palm Tag subdivision, that part of tax lot F-one A and part of tax lot J, southwesterly of NRD taking, and tax lot F-one B and part of tax lot H, all located in the southwest quarter of the section eleven, T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six prime meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from BNH to ML for the purpose of industrial development. Applicant Zappo LLC, general location, Fort Crook Road, South and Fairview Road. Case number Z dash two-one-zero-nine dash one-five. S- staff, an update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the applicant is requesting to rezone, uh, several parcels of land. Um, generally, the land is on the northeast corner of the intersection of Fort Crook Road and Fairview Road. Um, at this point, their request is for a light industrial development. The current zoning is a heavy neighborhood business. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Um, no plating is being requested at this time. That will be done at a later date. Um, but staff is recommending approval based on conformance with the comp plan, um, and zoning ordinance.
Alright. We'll open this up to public hearing. Does anybody that would like to speak on the record for or against, please come to the podium?
My name's Kyle Hazy with the NA Consulting Group, representing the applicant, along with myself. Uh, Kyle Peterson, the applicant is in the audience and present as well. Uh, as Tammy, uh, mentioned, we are, and gave a good overview of what we are proposing tonight. We currently do not have any proposed users for the site. We, we want to get the process moving forward to get the, uh, property in line with the future land use plan that Bellevue has. And that if, uh, a user does become available, that the applicant and the city as a whole do not mess out uh, on an opportunity from a business and employment standpoint. Uh, with that, I'll make myself available for any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you.
I. Yeah, I can speak. Um, so Kyle Peterson here on behalf of, of Zap, although developer. Um, and then I think Kyle and Tammy have kinda encapsulated what it is, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys would have.
Is there anybody from the, uh, public that wishes to speak on, for, on this matter for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
I guess question for staff. On the one map we received, the land immediately west of this is shown as FX. And in our packet, it talks about its vacant in ML. I think that change was made based on an application a couple months ago. Is that correct? So it is.
Correct. So GIS just had not updated it yet, um, when that map was run, cuz that was just recently approved through city council.
So again, this zoning will be consistent with the zoning we just did immediately to the west of it.
Correct.
And if they come forward at some point, uh, will we have them collapse these lots together? I think we had discussed that with the one to the west as well.
There will be a plating action. That'll come at a later date. At this point, they just wanna get the zoning place, as the applicant stated, so that they can get a potential user in there.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other comments or discussion, I guess I'd be prepared to make a motion. Hearing none, I'd recommend approval of this application based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, as well as a lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
Motion by Ackley?
Second.
Second by Cutsworth?
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council for public hearing on December seventh. Item three D, request to rezone lots one and two. Marsh- Marchio subdivision replat one, being a replat of lot one, Marchio's subdivision, from RE to RS one-twenty for the purpose of single-family residential development. And small subdivision plat lots one and two of Marchio subdivision replat one. Applicant Sebastian Enzora, Enzolera, pardon I guise. General location, four-two-one Bellevue Boulevard North. Case numbers Z dash two-one-zero-nine dash one-six and S dash two-one-zero-nine dash two-two. Staff, any updates?
Just that, um, as previously noted, a letter was received on this, um, from Kenneth and Edith German, just generally stating some concerns with sewer and parking. Um, just a brief overview, so the, um, property owner currently has just over an acre of land on that fronts Bellevue Boulevard. Um, the request is to subdivide into two lots, so it would go from an RE zoning to an RS one-twenty. Um, Bellevue Boulevard is currently kind of a mix of some acreage lots, some RS one-twenty lots, some RS eighty-four lots, to some smaller lots as well. A lot of the lots along Bellevue Boulevard are, are most likely non-conforming just based on their age. Um, you have a lot of houses that were built around the turn of the century. Um, you know, so they're a hundred years old plus. In regards to this application, um, the RS one-twenty request still is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, comprehensive plan shows this area as low-density resident, residential, which an RS one-twenty would still fit into that category. Um, the applicant has indicated that the request is to allow his parents to build a house on the second lot that is, um, added in this, in the plat. Um, with that, we can go ahead and open it up for public hearing?
Yep. Open it up to public hearings. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on, on this matter, on the record, for or against? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
The other thing I probably should add for the record, um, one of the issues brought up in, uh, Mr. German's letter was sewer. I did verify with our wastewater operations manager, there is sewer availability here. Um, some people do have to use some pumps to, you know, when they connect. Um, there was a statement in the letter about, uh, frequent pump failures. Um, our wastewater operations manager indicated that she's not aware of that and she sees a pump being a viable option to connect to the sewer in this location.
Commissioners?
So if I'm following your comment correctly, Ms. Palm, even if the house and the roadway are even, the fact that the sewer is gonna be below the house, it probably runs uphill slightly where it runs along the roadway, so you.
Correct.
The houses along there that do connect have a pump anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
She stated she sees that as a viable option and, um, sees that, that same situation would work for this property.
And the German letter, German letter also referenced parking. Again, I, as long as they have a driveway that fits two cars, do we have an issue with parking in that area?
No, and I think the issue is more with the steep slope. Um, obviously, yes, our topi- there are topography, steep topography along the Boulevard. Um, I did talk to Mr. Enzalera just to talk to him about his plans for future residence, driveway, all of that. He has looked at a couple of different options, but yes, it is possible to take access off of Bellevue Boulevard, um, and have adequate driveway and parking.
And I guess the last question, just eyeballing it, where the new lot line will be between lot one and lot two? If you look at the live map, it looks like there's a outbuilding of some kind. Is that gonna meet setbacks based on?
So we, yeah, we noticed that too. Overlay, in an older area town, the overlays are usually a little bit off. Um, it's hard to get them to all line up correctly, um, when you're dealing with, you know, outdated mapping in the area. Um, we did have the, uh, applicant surveyor take an extra close look at that. He did provide some additional information to show to us that yes, that structure will in fact be a minimum of five feet off the property line, which is what's requested by the zoning ordinance.
And the alternative, if they wanted a wider lot, they could remove that building and go farther north with the lot line, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chair, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan, as well as a lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
Second. Motion by Arnie, second by Casey.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council for public hearing December seventh? Item three E, request to rezone lot one, Fort Crook addition from BG to ML for the purpose of outdoor storage. Applicant Exarban Fence and Gate, Inc., general location, one-two-eight-zero-nine, South Ninth Street. Case numbers Z dash two-one-zero-nine dash one-three. Staff, could you give us an update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief summary. So the applicant is requesting the property be zoned to a light industrial use from its current, um, commercial. This is a vacant piece of property. Um, the applicant does own a fence company, um, did purchase the property, uh, was given notice by code enforcement just based on, um, the current use that is out there now. Um, subsequently, the applicant is coming in to ask for a rezoning request. I, ultimately, I believe the applicant does want to do some sort of building on the property, however, the current BG zoning would not allow any type of outdoor storage of product or otherwise, you know, the heavy equipment, so, um, to use the property as he wants to for his business, the applicant needs the flexibility of the light industrial zoning. Um, staff is recommending denial for a number of reasons. Um, Fort Crook Road plan, um, identifies this area as kind of an office commercial area. Um, city is currently undertaking an update with HDR for the Fort Crook Road plan. However, I don't see any major changes to this area in the overall future use and, um, vision of this particular node. Um, also, we have the Stratcom headquarters, uh, essentially across the street. That's a one-point-three million dollar, billion-dollar investment um, from the federal government. The idea behind this area was to have it redeveloped, have it essentially cleaned up, and kinda have a revitalization of the area based on the commitment that, um, the Air Force has made across the street. And I think the city still desires that. Um, we would hope that over time through redevelopment, um, we would see this area turn into a viable office commercial, um, area. Other item, um, the city shop is currently located to the south, immediately to the south. Um, that property is currently zoned BG. Um, all of the property on this side of Fort Crook Road, uh, south and just to the north of Schilling is, is currently zoned BG. The city has plans, um, to construct a centralized public works facility. It's in our current CIP. That's still, um, the city's goal, so hopefully, at some point in the near future, that shop will go away. Um, and that's yet another area that could be redeveloped, um, you know, right next to the Stratcom gate, across from the Stratcom headquarters, um, and again, hopefully would spur some potential redevelopment in that area. So for those reasons, staff is recommending denial of the applicant's request. I know the applicant and his representative are here this evening, so I'll turn it over to them and let them come up and, and speak to the commission.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, and Ms. Palm, thank you for your introduction. Uh, my name's Martin Pelster, twenty-one twenty, South Seventy-second Street, suite number twelve-hundred, Omaha, Nebraska. And with me in the audience, it's, uh, the owner of Exarban Fence and Gate, uh, LLC. It's, uh, Robert Malloy and he's accompanied by his son Hunter, who's doing a magnificent job of, uh, sitting still today. He's getting a civics lesson and I'm frankly thinking he's not gonna come back, but we'll see. Uh, as, uh, uh, Tammy indicated, uh, Exarban Fence is a fencing contractor here in Omaha, you know, Omaha, Bellevue, Sarpy County, Douglas County area, uh, currently, uh, has a facility at roughly at Forty-Fifth and L Street. And that's where they keep their equipment and store their fancy materials. Uh, you know, as, by way of background, just, uh, he's looking for, to expand, needs more room. Uh, business is good, so we need, uh, obviously need more, more room for equipment and, uh, fancy materials. So he looked for this, for property and this, this property obviously is closer to his home, uh, making it more desirable. But, uh, they went ahead and bought the property. Um, apparently, there was a little bit of, uh, snafu with the, uh, due diligence and not understanding the property wasn't zoned for the current use that he wants to put it to. Uh, possibly that was confused by the fact that the city is right next door with a similar type of use that, uh, he intended. So he did, uh, purchase the property for a hundred and twenty thousand, went ahead and put in a, uh, uh, a high chain link fence, which screened in, looks good, uh, started putting surface materials down, and that's when he got the enforcement letter. Uh, so that's why we're here today. Um, at this point, he's planning, he was, his plan is to, uh, store materials there and some equipment. Uh, eventually, uh, when he gets the property paid for, which would be in the next year or so, he does imply, does intend to put a building there which would have office space and some warehouse, or some storage inside and a shop area. So the thought process there, or the estimated cost, they're thinking is around five-hundred thousand for those improvements. Uh, but obviously, before we do that, we need to get the zoning changed, and that's why we're here today, so, uh, um, as noted in the staff report, the zoning was changed, was light industrial, uh, some time ago, more than ten years ago, and was changed to BG at this end. Uh, but with the, with the property being vacant, perhaps that tells us that the zoning's not proper. And maybe the use that he's intending, uh, in the light industrial is a, is a better zoning for this property and would get this property, uh, into the use. I think, uh, the staff report does indicate that properties nearby are zoned BG. Uh, if you go north of this property, uh, along Capeport, uh, I'm sorry, along, uh, Fort Crook Road, I think there is some heavier, uh, zoning in that area just north of here, uh, north of that property, which is light industrial. Perhaps something heavier than that. I'm not sure exactly what the zoning is there, but, uh, we do think that the, the light industrial zoning would be proper for this, uh, for this area, uh, and would allow him to use the property for his intended use. Um, I have. I have, that's all I have, we would request that you recommend approval. Uh if you have any questions for me or for my client, uh please let me know.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on the record for or against this item?
Um Greg Hendrickson, I reside at one, two, eight, one, eight, South Ninth Street. I have easy questions. He wants to rezone from BG to ML. Think I've been following this, BG is uh industrial?
BG is commercial.
Commercial.
General business, yes.
ML?
Light industrial, so it would be going from commercial to heavier uses.
Okay, and so what is my property, which is just less than three hundred feet from him?
Are you across the street?
Yes.
Okay, that's all zone BG, um there's several residences over there, so those are legal nonconforming structures. Um if they were to be destroyed by more than sixty percent fair market value. Um they couldn't be rebuilt unless they were rezoned appropriately for residential use. So everything there, uh um as you can see, Ms. Van Horn pulled up the map, everything in that kind of dark pink color is a BG zoning.
Okay. Cause I'm the, the one you're circling right there. I mean, I have no, no issues with this gentleman and you know what he's doing there, it's helping keep it looking good. Cause God knows, I've been doing the same. Um I win the lottery and buying that whole dead end street. That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item for or against? Not seeing anyone? I'll turn it over, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commissioners.
I guess two questions to me, one, it seems like when Stratcom, they were getting ready for the construction, did we have an application to change the zoning for rumors, which is just north of that, it seemed like people wanted to do outdoor storage and temporary parking and things that the zoning wouldn't allow. And basically, I don't recall if they did an application, we turned it down because it was also looking for ML, or if we basically said we weren't gonna support it, so they never applied.
I think my recollection is it was turned down, um. That was a situation where back ten, eleven years ago. Um the former rumor site, this property, they all went to the BG zoning because everyone saw a certain amount of opportunity with once you know Stratcom announced the uh substantial investment they were gonna make across the street. Um and once the Fort Creek Road redevelopment plan had been approved by the city. Um then yes, you're correct, Mr. Ackley, the property owner to the north saw an opportunity to kind of lease out their property for some of that construction equipment, but.
So again, your recommendation for denial is consistent with what we've done with previous applications north of there with the hope of getting more of a general business feel.
Correct, and I should also mention the future land use map too also shows this area as uh general business to um align with the Fort Creek Road redevelopment plan.
And then second question, the city's lot to the south, which if I'm maybe not even reading between the lines, but on point, we're maybe not in conformance, or are we grandfathered in?
We are not in conformance, it's, you know, the city shop has been there for decades, um so I would consider us legal nonconforming, once, once we leave, somebody cannot go back in and do what we're doing.
Whereas the current lot to the north, since it was vacant, again, there's no previous use to say they're grandfathering.
Correct. And like I said, hopefully the city shop will be gone in the near future, um once a centralized. The idea is once a centralized public works facility is built, we won't have multiple city shops around the city, it will all be done in that one centralized location, and then these city shops will be vacated.
And I guess question for the applicant, just to make sure I'm understanding, it sounds like he wants to build a office, maybe some interior storage and whatnot, but still the goal would be for some outdoor storage, is that?
That that's correct, yes, there would be, you know, the the uh the improvements plan would be an office space in uh in the building with some shop area where they do some of the welding and things of that nature inside, but also have outdoor storage, yes.
Yeah, if you, and again, it's hard without blowing up the picture here, but I think in the last three months in one of the applications tonight, if we shrink down, it's uh further west on Cape Part, and then south is where we keep putting in more of the light industrial and light manufacturing to kind of drive that further away from the main corridor there where we don't have other residential around, plus we're again trying to keep Stratcom with more business neighbors. You think your business would ever support having everything indoor?
Could you come up to the microphone just so we can get it on the record?
Robert Malloy, president of Exarban Fence and Gate, um we have too much storage, I mean, in in order to fit everything inside. We'd have to take up that whole lot with the building.
Yeah.
And you can't do that, um I know the city's been talking about selling that property for a while, I believe that's why it was rezoned ten, eleven years ago. Um but nothing's happened in ten years since the rezoning. And everything past the old rumors, I mean, it's zone light industrial, if you guys were to sell that property. Um the city's property, you're saying, I mean, somebody would tear all that building down and everything and put you know, general business in there?
They would have to under the current zoning, to my knowledge, that BG zoning has been there for decades since we've had zoning, it's not something that the city ever rezoned, so um to be in conformance with the current Fort Creek Road Plan, comprehensive plan, the city would leave it zone BG and hope for redevelopment on that property.
I was under the understanding that in two thousand eleven, it was rezoned to.
Not that property, no.
No, no, my property.
Correct, correct, and I guess the one thing I point out too is that property's been vacant for ever, so it didn't get developed under an ML zoning either.
So with, I think on your notes, that it said like you were hoping that a gas station or something like that would go in there. Honestly, I mean with my property there and somebody that buys that, I mean, they'd have to take both properties to make it worth their while. I just, I, your property there, I mean, I believe, wouldn't it fall under the grandfather rights? Like they can buy that property as is and use it, but they can't do any upgrades.
That would not be the city's intention, if the city vacates that property.
No, I know, but that could happen, right?
I don't believe so, the city doesn't want that to happen, so um we would make sure that that was not gonna be the situation.
So, oh, so if.
The city, the city would control that, we own it, so if we don't want it to look like that when we leave, we'll make sure that it doesn't. Under the current zoning.
In other words, so the grandfather doesn't continue.
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
I have a question for staff, Mr. Chair, uh the redevelopment plan. Has that been tweaked at all since the pandemic, because it states that Fort Creek, new offices and technology buildings? I mean, from a realtor's perspective, I really don't see new offices and technology buildings.
Here's where we're at, so the city has contracted with HDR since the pandemic to update the plan, just being part of that process and involved in those conversations. I'm not gonna say that yes, this entire area will be commercial, but I don't foresee it turning to a light industrial or industrial area. Um and I guess that's the point I was trying to make in the staff report, you know, maybe there are some different uses that come into play, maybe you don't have office buildings, but um you know, maybe you have a scooter's kiosk, maybe you have um you know, a gas station still, I mean, there's still businesses that are thriving um through the pandemic, so while you may not have a traditional office building, you may have something different that would fall along those lines of a a general business type of development, I think that's what the city would want to see. And um that's the type of the development the city would like to foster in in an attempt to clean up that corridor, especially across the street from Stratcom.
Thank you. I remember a while back, we had a applicant that came in, I think, to do something in the south end of Old Town. Where we considered the noise from the flight line, can we uh zoom out just to see how close? I I guess, are we within the the severe noise area of that flight line with this property?
It's within the sixty-five decibel range, so it's not the most restrictive, no. Um office comment just was, hey, you're gonna hear some loud airplanes once in a while.
Okay.
Um being that close to the runway.
Okay, I what I guess where I'm going is is sixty-five high enough that uh different typical constructions necessary?
No.
Okay.
No.
And then one more comment, and this is for the owner of the property. Um there was a note in here about um the gate on your property was on a private drive. I just wanted to make sure that the the city, you know, that you you understood what that was and everything, it sounds like when you bought the property, some, there was some misunderstandings happening.
Yeah, so what happened was before I put that gate in, I went to the supervisor of the maintenance shop. Okay, he specifically told me, it's okay to have your gate there, we, you can use the driveway, we don't care. But then after this zoning thing happened, then the tune changed, they said, well, he didn't have to say so to do that. Um so that's, that's where we're at on that. I also talked to that supervisor, and he said that they've been planning on selling that building for the last ten years. And then nothing's happened, and he don't foresee it happening. So, that's it. Thank you.
Guess I would agree to disagree. Um and the city in public works would ascertain that no, no permission was given, and that's a private easement, so no matter what happens. The city is requesting that that access be removed.
Can I have a question for staff?
Yes.
Where are they not allowed to put a gate on that property?
Anywhere, you see where the driveway is um to the east?
To the east, okay.
Nowhere along the east, that's the city's private drive, so that's city access only.
Thank you.
And the city is not interested in a shared easement.
Yeah, just one one comment on that, i- i- we understand that's an issue, and and if the zoning is proven, you know, if we get the zoning changed. We'll access the property, uh probably uh on the opposite end, I would think, but we will move that, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Maybe a question for staff, Tammy, so I looked at the, you and Tom Strachey were talking about the property to the north that applied and was rejected, if I look at the future land use, it actually shows uh MH.
The property to the north?
Yeah, across Schilling Drive from this.
That would not be correct for, and and maybe Sarpy doesn't have that correct on that aerial.
Is that not?
Yeah, that's incorrect, um our comp plan shows that as commercial, I'll have them correct that.
Okay. Cause I was like, why would it have been denied because it?
Sometimes with the shape files, um there's some bleeding that occurs within the shape file, and so that may have happened, but no, that's, that's not correct, so I'll make sure they change that.
Maybe just some comments, not actually a question, I think I I agree with uh comment down here about the Fort Creek Road Plan, I actually was at some meetings recently on the kind of the subcommittee, looking at some stuff there, I I think this, I think the Fort Creek Road Plan was wrong, I think that I don't envision office technology in this area, I I definitely could see gas station, I could see businesses, but I think the the plan is wrong, so it's hard to just stand on that plan alone that's ten, ten years old that um and the other part that makes this one really hard is if you drive north or south of this area at all, half mile, you see exactly the same thing he wants to do right there. And and it makes it really hard that um there's just an imagine, I shouldn't say imagine, there's a line that's been drawn on Schilling Drive, and he just happens to be on the side of the line, he can't do this, you know, and and I realize that's how the zoning works, it's just, it's a, it's a tough one because of the fact that you drive up and down that, and what he's doing is exactly what you see up and down that entire stretch, so.
Guess a couple of comments to that, um we have to start somewhere. You know, if we keep approving, just based on what we already have, we're not gonna get any kind of redevelopment. And I I I would say again, even if we're not gonna get office and technology, I still think using that BG as your underlying zoning, that's the types of uses. Regardless of whether it's a gas station, scooters, whatever, that's the type of uses that are gonna be desirable there under that BG zoning versus an industrial zoning. Industrial zoning is going to open it up to a lot of different uses that the city would not have control of.
Question for staff, I assume we haven't had an application because it hasn't come through, but I know there was an article in the paper a while ago with horse racing or casinos potentially coming into that. I think it's the northeast corner there of Cape Part and seventy-five, is that where the discussion was?
I cannot speak to that, Mr. Ackley.
My recollection of a newspaper article, that's, that's where I recall that being, which again, who knows where that might go, but if that's the case, that would certainly drive a a lot of redevelopment around there. Um again, whether that ever happens, who knows?
I would just make a general comment that part of our task too is to look towards the future for the city and the vision that is being worked out or and or uh adapted as the years go by and with the Fort Creek Road redevelopment plan being updated. We have a vision that, and it may be tweaked, but we have a vision that kind of outlines uh a general guidance of kind of what the city hopes the development along that corridor becomes, and to that it redevelopment is needed much on that quarter. So I would be hard pressed to approve a type of zoning for a type of business that is not in the goal of what we're looking for there, or at least what the city is looking for.
Sir, the public hearing's closed, I'm sorry.
My question is.
Public hearing's closed.
Yeah, so I, we gotta keep it on.
Okay.
I know that you guys have already gone through this, Tammy, cause I know you're thorough, but I'm still gonna ask on the record. Are there any conditional uses on the existing zoning that would conform with what he wants to use the property for?
No.
Okay.
And it's because of the outdoor storage component.
It's because of the heavier nature of the business, correct?
Now you got my brain spinning with that question you just asked, I mean, would the city entertain any type of like special use permit that would coincide with the city, as as long as the city's property remains what it is? You know, uh doing special use permit for that, so he could remain there until such time the city does whatever they're gonna do with theirs?
We do not have any special use permit um options in the zoning ordinance, and I would not. We can't, I would not, I would not want any kind of a contractual zoning, no.
Okay.
Um we, the few that we have now, we're in very expensive legal battles with, and they're not worth it. So um very bluntly, I would say no, that's not a, that's not an avenue that the city desires to pursue.
And I think from the budgets that we've done recently, I remember that there is money in there for the centralized uh facility, so even though this has been, you know, an ongoing issue. I do know the city has budgeted a substantial amount of money for that central facility in the next couple of years to resolve that, so I wouldn't, as if I was the property owner, I wouldn't want my property tied to a property I know is going to change within a decade, so I wouldn't wanna make investments in a property in that regard. And I was just curious about, and the reason I was asking about the conditional use was just trying to find the middle ground, make everyone happy. As Sue said, eh we we've got a comprehensive plan to the city, and um as a general rule of thumb, we try to stick with that. I think that with COVID, that plan is going to change significantly the next time that it gets reviewed. Um in terms of how much commercial is needed, how much office. But at this time, we have a plan that kind of indicates that this is a not the use for that property, um. And it sounds like uh just a bad situation uh is going on, but you know, as a general rule of thumb, we try to I think I try to stick with whatever the comprehensive plan is, so.
I guess, Mr. Malloy, we'd love to see your business in Bellevue, but unfortunately. I guess, Mr. Malloy, we'd love to see your business in Bellevue, but unfortunately, this spot just with vacant outdoor. And even with the building without door is not what we're hoping for right now. And hopefully you'll chat with Tammy or others in the city and think if there's some other places we could maybe get you to fit in. And of course, after us, we're just a recommending body. Obviously, city council may see things differently, so please don't, uh, don't take any recommendation we may make. If that comes out negative is, is stopping you. You got one more stop to go. So with that, I guess I'd be prepared to make a motion if there's no other comments. I'd make a motion, uh, follow the recommendation of the planning department to deny this application. Based on a lack of conformance with the Fort Creek Redevelopment Plan and the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Cutsforth.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council on, for public hearing on December seventh. Item three F, request to rezone the north half of the east thirty-five point two feet of lot two. And the north half of lot three, Tiller's Hillcrest Edition from RS eighty-four to RD sixty. For the purpose of duplex residential. Applicant BJ Justice. General location, two, one, zero, Galvin Road North. Case number Z dash two, one, zero, nine, dash, one, four. Staff, could you give us a update?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Justice previously came before the commission in the past couple of years. He had a residence that was legal non-conforming, zone BG. He was trying to refinance at the time. At the time, he was, uh, rezoned to RS eighty-four. Uh, Mr. Justice is now coming back to us. Uh, has indicated he likes, uh, to, wants to rent out a portion of the structure. Therefore, RD sixty is the more appropriate zoning for him. Um, staff is recommending approval. Future land use map shows this area as commercial. I'd still say we leave it as commercial. The rezoning doesn't impact that. Um, but since it's an existing structure, under the circumstances, staff would support Mr. Justice's request.
Alright. And.
I'm BJ Justice. I'm really sorry about messing this up. Cause before Tammy had it set up to go to our D sixty, and for some reason I canceled, I don't remember why. But I'm just asking, what we need is, uh, I understand as a real estate. Objective, you can rent out part of your house without a zoning, but I would like, my grandson is. Staying up in our upstairs right now. We'd just like to have it legal so that we can have both residential and duplex, either or. There are times where you live in a whole house, and then there are times that we might want to rent it out, so I don't wanna have a problem. So that's my request.
Thank you.
And I've got a lot of people here wanting to vote.
Uh, make sure you sign the, the sheet.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Uh, still have to say if there's anyone that would like to speak on the record for or against this item. Make sure there's no one in the back or on the corner. Seeing none, close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners.
Could I ask the applicant a question? Hey, Mr. Justice, I see you have the house listed, uh, for sale for three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
We're not gonna sell. My granddaughter's a real estate agent, and she wanted to put it on the market. And I said, this is the only way we'd sell it, and obviously, we're not gonna have anybody offer us that, so we're taking it back off.
Okay.
The market.
That's my question, because of the zoning change, I was curious.
I said, you know, argue with a little bit. You, you know, they're gonna see the sign and they're gonna have a problem with that. But I lost the argument. She's really aggressive and does really well. She just thought she would help us out. But. Obviously, if it sold for that, I'd take it. It's not gonna sell, I'm sorry.
Any offers?
No.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Questions for staff, with the change of zoning, could you build a second structure on the lot then, or would it have to have an adjoining party wall?
You potentially, well, if, if the structure is set up currently where you have two separate facilities, then that would be it. You can only have two dwellings, so.
We're converting back to single residential.
If that, RD sixty is gonna allow for a two-family, whether it's attached or detached. So if there's two, if that structure is set up to allow for two families in that dwelling, then that's it.
And is there anything that restricts him otherwise from?
I'm not able to hear, Mr. Ackley. I'm sorry.
Is there other, any other restriction that would not allow them to continue to rent to somebody in the house? Obviously, uh, duplex with exterior, but if it's a family member and you're using common entrance.
Correct, if, if it's a family member, they can do it. Um, but if it's not related by blood, marriage, adoption, or otherwise, then that's the issue.
Right, but again, so the rezoning would allow a second structure to be built, and it's, uh, a large lot would probably meet additional setbacks, right?
It could allow for a second structure, but not if the structure on the lot is converted such that. Um, you have a two-family dwelling there currently.
Understood.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And can we zoom out a little bit? Just to see all the other buildings around there? Thank you. Again, it's mostly business all around it.
It, it's been a house for, yeah, my wife's father built it in nineteen fifty-six. They had an acreage out there, and it's been sold and developed, but the house was remained on a half acre.
Okay, thank you.
We completely rehabbed the house inside, top to bottom, when we moved in it six years ago.
We have a cry group this evening. If no one else has any other further comments, I'll make a motion. Uh, I'd make a recommendation, approval of this application based upon conformance with the zoning ordinance and a lack of perceived negative impact on the surrounding area.
Second.
Motion by Ackley, second by Arnie.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of the city council on December seventh.
I really thank you. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your patience.